Hi, good evening everybody. I'd like to call to order the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, September second. May I have a roll call please?
Chair Roof.
Here.
Vice Chair Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Here.
Commissioner Sakerson.
Here.
Commissioner Werthen.
Here.
Thank you, and we're gonna move on to the flag salute. I see I'm down so I will be happy to lead us in the flag salute if everyone could please stand. Thank you everybody. We now are going to proceed to an agenda review. Do any of my fellow commissioners care to revise the order of the agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to community comments and suggestions. This public comment period is an invitation to members of the community to present issues, thoughts, or suggestions on matters not scheduled on tonight's agenda. Comments should be limited to those matters that are within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. Members of the public may provide public comment in person or remotely by registering and joining the Zoom meeting utilizing the link that's within the agenda. Once in the meeting, please use raise hand feature to indicate your desire for public comment. And so I will now open our community comments and suggestions portion for any comment that's here from the public. Anyone in the room tonight who would wish to give a public comment? Seeing none, do we have anyone online for public comment tonight?
At this time, we have nobody on Zoom chair.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll go ahead and close that public comment period and move to item number six, written communications. Do we have any written communications tonight?
None for this evening.
Thank you. So we'll close that and move to our consent agenda. And the only item we have here is the approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes or are there any changes to the minutes that anyone has? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you having a second. May we have a roll call please?
Commissioner Buchanan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sakerson?
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Werthen?
Yes.
Chair Roof.
Yes. So we will accept the minutes and move on to item eight, public hearings. Item eight A is the conditional use permit twenty five dash zero zero two. Do we have a staff report on that item?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon Chair and Commissioners. Today I will present for your consideration conditional use permit twenty five dash zero zero two. This item concerns a proposal to construct two new multifamily structures. The one point four acre parcel is located at the westernmost end of Fair Oaks Avenue within the multifamily apartment zoning district. The property is currently developed with five multifamily buildings totaling eight twenty eight apartment units. These units were constructed in nineteen seventy nine and are located within a high density residential area consistent with the site's general plan designation. These images depict the current appearance of the apartment complex as seen from Fair Oaks Avenue just to give you guys a little bit of site context. Alright, the applicant proposes to construct two additional multifamily buildings, each containing four one bedroom accessory dwelling units for a total of eight new ADUs. In addition to these structures, the project includes expansion of the existing clubhouse and utility facility and a new landscaped common area to serve both new and existing residences. The site plan demonstrates the newly proposed construction which can be seen to the right of that dashed line. The maximum site density is fourteen dwelling units per acre which would allow for a maximum of nineteen point six units on the site which we round up to twenty units. This proposal is submitted under newly amended state ADU law which as of January first, twenty twenty five allows for up to eight detached ADUs on lots with existing multifamily structures. While the project qualifies under While the project qualifies under the previously mentioned legislation, the proposed building height exceeds the maximum of eighteen feet for detached units. Therefore, a conditional use permit is required to authorize this deviation from the standard. The proposed ADU structures will reach twenty-two feet in height, a three-foot increase over the eighteen foot ADU height limit. However, this remains well below the thirty-foot height maximum for primary structures within the multifamily apartment zone. The project includes twenty-eight existing units, twenty-one bedroom, and eight two bedrooms, which totals to eighteen density units under zoning rules. The proposal adds eight accessory dwelling units, which are excluded from the density calculation. As a result, the total density remains at eighteen units, which is well within the twenty-unit maximum allowed. This does mean that the project complies fully with the zoning requirements, and it does leave room for two additional units if needed in the future, but not proposed at this time. The project meets and slightly exceeds the required parking for existing units. A total of fifty-four spaces are required, and of those, thirty-six being covered and eighteen uncovered. The applicant proposes as a part of this project providing fifty-seven parking spaces, thirty-six covered, twenty-one uncovered, which does exceed the requirement by three spaces. Additionally, the applicant voluntarily included those three parking spaces for the new accessory dwelling units, even though it is not required as a part of state law. All right. The next several slides illustrate the proposed building elevations with a focus on showcasing the primary architectural elements of the project. So this is building A. And this is building B. The proposed buildings feature symmetrical facades, arched central entries, and design elements that are cohesive with the existing apartment buildings. Some of the key features are low-pitched roofs, consistent materials and color schemes, and private outdoor space for each unit. All right. The clubhouse expansion mirrors the architectural style that I just went over, using matching materials, roof lines, and finishes to maintain design unity across the property. In regards to landscaping, the project integrates a central courtyard between the two new buildings, surrounded by drought-tolerant and low-maintenance planting. The overall site coverage breakdown results in nineteen percent landscaping, forty-one percent paved areas, and forty percent building coverage, which represents a generally balanced approach to site development. In summary, staff recommends the commission adoption of the resolution to approve conditional use permit twenty-five dash zero zero two, and finding that the project qualifies as categorically exempt for infill development pursuant to SEQA State Guideline Section one five three three two. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. We appreciate that. I'll open it up for questions from my fellow commissioners. Go ahead, Commissioner Werden.
I just had a quick procedural question. I just want to make sure, I live around the corner. What's the distance? I want to make sure I'm not commenting or involved on this if I'm too close. I don't think I am. I'm like point three miles away, couple blocks over.
Five hundred feet.
Okay, we have to work it.
Thank you, Commissioner Werden. Do we have any questions from my fellow commissioners on this item?
I do. I just have a brief question. When you look at the general conditions, go to page twenty-one of our packet, item fourteen, it just says all parking areas of five or more spaces shall have an average of one half-foot cantileumination. I'm wondering, does the current site meet that? Or I'm just, maybe it's kind of a reminder for the building department as it goes through. You know, hoping that if the current conditions aren't met with the existing lighting, some of that existing lighting will get upgraded to meet this condition, because it comes back down, if you highlight item eighteen, at the time of application, applicants shall provide details on any proposed exterior lighting if applicable. So those two are related to each other. I'm just, rather than just having the new new area meet the lighting conditions, it would seem to me to be appropriate for the, all of the, all of the lighting for both existing and new parking areas meet the current, you know, lighting criteria.
So because this project is undergoing this entitlement process.
Right.
It will be reviewed holistically when it gets to the building permit element. So I will likely be the project manager who's reviewing the building plans, and I'll ensure that if there are current standards that don't meet that requirement, that it's notated to the applicant and made to be brought into compliance.
I mean, I certainly recognize in structures and things like that, other aspects of the current project, they're not going to have to reevaluate and meet all current construction and, you know, criteria that are seen to me from a life safety and a cost basis, or, you know, situation. It's affordable to do now. Let's just make sure that all the parking meets that, that safe current standard. That's my only comment on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. Commissioner Sakerson or Commissioner Werden, any questions you have?
Um, I apologize, also, just because my eyesight is not the greatest, but is there a general square footage for each of the units?
Yeah, so that actually isn't included in the, in the plans. You didn't miss it. I did do the square footage calculation myself, but I didn't include it. Each unit is around six hundred square feet. They're all one-bedroom units. And so the square footage varies, I think, the smallest one being like five hundred ninety square feet, and the biggest one being around six hundred twenty. So pretty, pretty little variation in that way. But all of them are under eight hundred square feet, which is critical to this California ADU law.
Thank you.
Any other question? I don't see any at this time. So I will open it up for a public comment on this agenda item eight A. Do we have anyone in the room who would like to give comment?
Uh, this is really just a comment for the applicant's information. I know that as of last week, the recommended trees uh are being changed for our area. So it might not be a bad idea to check on that before, before, before getting the trees. That's all I had.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Tibbits, and I forgot my hearing is, and I really apologize. I didn't quite hear what you said. But I have owned this place for over twenty years, and my good friend Greg here, he drew the plans and
And I'm, I'm so sorry, sir. Can I ask you to speak into, can I ask you to speak into the mic? Because then the people can hear you from.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Sorry, go ahead.
Anyway, I'll repeat the story as I told to Architectural Review. We tried this process fifteen years ago, and I called the local bank before I started. I asked them if we could add additional units, and the local banker said, yes, you can. So Greg and I went ahead and we drew up plans, cost us quite a bit of money. And at the very end, you know, I had the plan stamped, and the building department said, come on down, pay your fee. So I said, hold on, let me call Dallas again where the corporate was. And they said, no, if you build it, we're going to call the loan, you know? And so I stopped the process at that point. Anyway, I'm back again to try it again. And I got the green light, so I got my fingers crossed that they won't change their mind. Anyway, I just want to add you guys that, could you bring the picture up of the entire place again? Yeah, just the, the whole floor. Yeah, there. Okay. Now, listen, this is, I'm kind of, I'm kind of proud of this place, you guys, because, you know, I have, let's see. Oh, could you bring the whole, the whole thing up? No. Well, anyway. Okay.
Give us one sec. We'll get it.
Okay, there you go. Okay, you know, it's got a pool, it's got a sauna, it's got a utility room, and I'm adding a spa and a rec room. I mean, these are pretty good-sized amenities. And if you could find another complex on the coast that has these amenities, I would like to see it. Okay? I could have scrapped the spa, maybe added some more units, but I'd rather have a really nice place that everybody can be proud of, you know, rather than just shoving units in there, you know? And that's been my attitude. Okay, I don't make a whole lot of money down there. I'm not really a good landlord. I, my attitude is I don't raise a rent once people get in there. And consequently, I've paid the price. I rent to, I have fifty percent section eight in there, so I'm able to pass the burden on to people in section eight, and that's kind of how I've done it. But anyway, that's sort of the gist of what I've been doing. And I just want to say thank you to Greg, who did a great job, and thank you very much for listening.
Thank you so much, sir. We appreciate that. Do we have anyone else from the, from the public who'd like to make a comment on this item? Seeing nobody, do we have anybody online who would like to make a comment?
We have one person online, Andrew Tibbits. I'm not sure if he's related to the applicant. But Andrew, if you, if you'd like to speak about this item, you're more than welcome to it. You can go ahead and raise your hand now. Chair, we have no hands.
Okay. Well, thank you for watching, Andrew. That was very nice to your talk. I'll bring it back to the board for any, any comments anybody has about the project? No. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I like the project. I will say that we have talked as a commission off and on over the last couple of years about projects that are similar to this in scope, infilling areas that can take it, within reason, keeping the nature of the community in mind, and architecturally keeping it to where it's not an eyesore, but it also still addresses missing housing. And I feel like this is a good example of that. So I do appreciate it. I appreciate an example of the compromises needed to create a space that isn't just a shoebox. So I appreciate you saying that you care about putting in amenities like a pool and a spa, something where people can feel proud to call it a home. Theoretically, we could argue all day long about parking versus not parking. I understand that state law does not require it for ADUs. I still appreciate that some parking is being put in. So I think this is an example of a project that if more property owners could and would take on such things, I think we would benefit as a city. Those are just my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Werden, any comments?
I just echo that. I live around the corner, and I think it's a good example of an unused field or an unused patch of, of property that's very reasonably, and I think wisely, being infilled. And I think it's going to be a, an add to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'd also like to echo my fellow commissioners. Thank you so much for bringing this project forward, for that missing housing component. And I wanted to add that I really appreciate you and your designer putting in the outdoor space for those folks, so that they can have a little privacy and be outdoors. So it's really, I really appreciated that part of the project. So any other comments? If not, then I will entertain a motion for this item.
I'll move that we adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit twenty-five dash zero zero two. And I don't need to read the sequel part as well. And I find that this action is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section fifteen three three two of the state SEQA guidelines regarding infill development.
I'll second.
Thank you. With the second, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Werden?
Yes.
Commissioner Sakerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martin?
Yes.
Chair Roof?
Yes. So we will close that item with that passage. Thank you so much, everybody, and thank you, sir. And thank you, thank you both of you, sirs. And we will move on to item eight B, the consideration of amendments to Title sixteen of the Arroyo Grande Municipal Code regarding supportive housing, transitional housing, and low-barrier navigation centers. Do we have a presentation from staff?
Yes, thank you, Chair Roof. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Andrew Perez, the city's planning manager, and I'm here this evening to present this Development Code amendment with regarding supportive housing, transitional housing, and low-barrier navigation centers. So we're here tonight because we are implementing programs from the city's housing element, which was certified back in May of twenty twenty-one. As you all know, the housing element is really the city's roadmap to achieving and complying with our regional housing needs allocation. You know, a significant component of the element is the implementation programs, which kind of direct us to oftentimes amend the municipal code for various reasons. Some examples include changing permitting requirements or increasing density. And here it's to allow kind of a new land use type in our municipal code. So these proposed Development Code amendments will implement programs J point two dash two and J point two dash three. So while the city was preparing and drafting the housing element, two significant pieces of legislation were signed into law that ended up becoming these programs. So in twenty eighteen, Assembly Bill twenty-one sixty-two was signed, which requires cities to treat supportive and transitional housing as residential uses for the purposes of land use permitting. In twenty nineteen, Assembly Bill one oh one was signed into law, which established low-barrier navigation centers as a use, and established that there should be allowed by right in residential and mixed-use zones that allow multifamily residential uses. So these development codes, or I'm sorry, these assembly bills turned into the programs that resulted in this Development Code amendment before you today. So I thought it'd be helpful, just before we get into the meat of the discussion, to describe the definitions of supportive and transitional housing. They're very similar, with the main distinction being the length of stay that's intended for the client. So supportive housing is housing for the target population with no limit of stay, you know, oftentimes intended to be long-term or even permanent. And within that development, there are onsite or service providers that are offsite but have a presence at the development. Whereas transitional housing is a subset of supportive housing and is meant to be temporary rental housing, so for about a minimum of six months. It also provides us onsite support services with the goal of transitioning those clients to permanent housing solutions. And you'll hear target population used throughout the presentation and also in your staff report, and generally defined by the government code as low-income individuals facing homelessness. They could be facing, or have mental health conditions, physical or mental disabilities, and may suffer from substance abuse disorders that prevent them from obtaining and maintaining permanent housing. So beginning with supportive housing and transitional housing, government code mandates that cities allow both these uses by right in all zones that allow residential uses, and that they are also subject to the development standards of the zone that would apply to other residential uses. And so by right means that a city cannot require a discretionary permit, like a conditional use permit or minor use permit, and also may not require a public hearing to establish these uses. It is important to note that a development does not need to be one hundred percent dedicated to supportive or transitional housing, but the greater of twenty-five percent or twelve units need to be restricted to serve that target population. However, all of the units within a development that proposes to provide supportive or transitional housing must be restricted to low-income households, with the exception of the manager's unit. And furthermore, the support services must be provided onsite, and this could be anything from, you know, employment services, case management, physical or mental health care, anything that helps people, you know, kind of get back on their feet and hopefully find permanent housing. So when establishing or proposing to establish one of these uses, a developer must submit a plan demonstrating how they'll be providing those How they'll be providing those services onsite. Um, so at a minimum, it's expected that. Um, the name of the organization that's providing services will be identified, uh, the funding source for those services. As well as the intended staffing levels to provide those services to the residents. Uh, and the kind of building permit plans will need designate the area that's dedicated for the support services and the administration of the program. Um, the area that needs to be dedicated, the size is determined by the number of units. Um, so for units of twelve or developments of twelve units or less, at least ninety square foot feet needs to be dedicated uh to the admin area. Uh, moving on to the low barrier navigation center standards. Um, this use is defined by state as a housing-first, low-barrier, service-enriched shelter. That provides temporary living facilities and case managers to available resources. Uh, as its name implies, it's intended to uh have a very low barrier to entry, um, to hopefully encourage people to. Um, to come in if if they meet the target population. So um, some of the low barriers include. Um, allowances for partners if it's not a population-specific site. Um, there's allowances for pets. Um, storage must be provided for clients' possessions. Um, and the development must provide some privacy, um, such as partitions around beds if it's a kind of open area. Or best case scenario, individual private rooms. Similar to supportive housing, uh, low barrier navigation centers must be allowed by right in all areas that allow residential uses. Um, they also must operate with the coordinated entry system. So uh, this is kind of a statewide, um, and even federal wide. Tracking system that um kind of monitors and and keeps track of um folks, length their stays. Where they're staying, where they're moved around, um, and try to get them the resources they need. Uh, just the onsite must be resources and services to connect residents with um permanent housing solutions. Uh, these centers must collaborate with the state, utilize their resources, and then track the client information. So in addition to those development standards and the definitions of these new uses, um. In the new code section, uh, there were other parts of the development code that were amended to ensure consistency throughout. Um, so for example, definitions that were previously contained in section sixteen oh four of the municipal code. Uh, were deleted and now can be found in this new code section. Uh, similarly, the land use tables in section sixteen thirty-two and sixteen thirty-six, um, that. Establish the use requirements or permit requirements for different land uses uh were amended, and those just refer the user to this new code section. Uh, for all the information about permitting these new uses. Uh, this code amendment was code amendment was determined to be exempt from SEQA pursuant to uh sections one five zero six zero and one five zero six one. Of the state guidelines. And in conclusion, staff recommends that the commission adopt the prepared resolution recommending city council. Adopt the proposed development code amendments. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you for the presentation. Do my fellow commissioners have any questions about this item? Any questions, Mr. Um. I think I I just had one question. Um, for these different housing types of the supportive, the transitional. And the low barrier navigation centers, do we have those types right now in the city?
Uh, good question, but we do not at the moment. Um, we do have an emergency shelter that is operated by the Five Cities Homeless Coalition on East Grand Avenue. Um, but none of the housing types being considered this evening are located in the city.
Okay, what do you think is the barrier to those? Is it just a funding or?
Uh, probably I would assume it's funding for the organizations that would be providing the services. So. Uh, the funding for the staffing and those resources that they are required to provide. Um, as well as the development on these sites if there's not an existing structure that can accommodate the use.
Okay, and then with the by right um idea. Um, the. When they would still submit an application, it just wouldn't require a permit or anything like that. Is that correct?
It would typically require a building permit, which is a ministerial permit. So uh, as long as they're essentially checking the boxes of the building code and then. Our development standards in this proposed ordinance, um, a permit would be issued.
Okay, and that and part of that is. Part of what they would have to document is these supportive services and how that would be provided and funded. And that would be in that. That that would be provided to you when they when you were giving them the permit for that.
Correct, yeah, that'd be part of their seminal package to the city, so we can confirm those.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Um, I don't think anyone else had it questions. Oh, go ahead.
So just piggybacking on that question. So let's say the organization comes forth, says we have all these things, we've checked off all the boxes. And at the planning department, you guys try to vet the services that are gonna be provided. What triggers you to be able to say, oh, that that service doesn't necessarily seem legitimate? That's like a new LLC that just came out, you know, three months ago at the same time that you've started this permit. Do you know what I'm saying? Just like what would? What would trigger that ability to say, yes, you cited a service, but it doesn't qualify?
So there's no hard and clear direction in the government code. Um, there is some. I guess leeway afforded to the city to use our discretion um in evaluating service provider. I'm sure it'd be, you know. A conversation we can have with an applicant, probably in consultation with our um legal counsel, and perhaps that um. Maybe it could be an agreement to provide X number of services for a certain period of time to can um to confirm that. Yeah, yeah, I think I think we do. There's um, there's nothing in the government code that says we cannot, so um. I I I'm assuming that means we can, and um I don't know anything that says that prohibits us from doing so.
If I can piggyback off that, then let's assume that an applicant comes in and the permit is denied. At that point, might it trigger an appeal to us as a planning commission? I know I uh, you know, I I don't know. What's their process, appeal process if if their application is denied because they have an inadequate, you know, proposal?
Yeah, I believe there would certainly be some um provisions in our municipal code that would allow for an appeal. Off the top of my head, I don't know whether that'd come to this commission or to city council, but um, uh, there would be. You know, a a path for an appeal.
They would have certain rights to appeal, is what.
Correct.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Don't go borrowing trouble. Just kidding. Um, any other questions that anyone has? Seeing none, um, I'd like to open public comment for anyone in the room who'd like to comment on this item eight B. Seeing nobody? Do we have anyone online for this item?
Uh, we have nobody online at this time, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So I will close public comment for item eight B and bring it back to the commission for um. Either comments or a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move the planning commission adopt the resolution of the planning commission. Of the City of Arroyo Grande recommending the city council adopt an ordinance approving development code amendments regarding supportive housing. Transitional housing and low barrier navigation centers.
And find that is. And find it exempt from SEQA? I think I have to say that.
Set a requirement to be verbalized on wasn't.
It is best to have it on the record just to be safe.
Right, where is it here? Oh, including the finding that this action is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act. Pursuant to state guidelines, section one five zero six zero C two and one five zero six one B three.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Having a second, can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sakerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wurden?
Yes.
And Chair Roof?
Yes. Okay, seeing that is passed, we will close that item and move to nine non-public hearing items. There are none there, so we will move on to ten notice of administrative items since June third, twenty twenty-five, and we have quite a few. Uh, does anyone have any comments on those? Or should we move past that? Seeing none, I will close that and move to item number eleven, which is commission communications. Um, do we have any communications from the commission? Everybody have a good summer?
Miss seeing all of you for like months.
I know, it's been quite a long time. I I actually did have one. I was just gonna ask, and I probably should have messaged you ahead, but do you have an update on the Halcyon Complete Streets? Plan and kind of where we are with that? And then the bridge, are are you gonna do that in staff communications?
Hi, Brian Padrati, Community Development Director. Um. I wasn't gonna give you an update on our infrastructure projects, but we could do that. Um, I I could do.
We we could wait till the next meeting. I know it's been a long time, and I didn't prep ahead of time to ask you, so I'll I'll hold it till next time.
I can give you, yeah, I think I can give you hopefully a quick update. Um.
Oh, that'd be cool. I'd like to hear how it's going, so I can tell people, hold on, it's okay.
Yes, so um Trafficway Bridge is moving along well. If you've looked over the edge of the pit. Uh, the the forming up of the um of the stru- the understructure is happening now. Um, so it's on time, um, still uh slated for completion in December. Um, there have been, uh, you know, hiccups along the way in terms of rerouting traffic and um. Our engineer is in a constant state of trying to make adjustments to lights and uh painting and. The traffic circle and things like that to kind of um smooth that over. Uh, so everything's going well with Trafficway Bridge.
I do have to add, I love the traffic circle by the by the high school. It is so much better than it was before. Anyway, just my opinion. Sorry, go ahead.
That's good to hear, yes. And we do have a, we do have some cool videos. Uh, in fact, one of the videos went viral. Um, which was a before and after shot um of the traffic circle before and after at the same time. Uh, same time of day. Um, so uh, yeah, things are going well with that. Um, on Halcyon Complete Streets, um, it is also uh moving along. Um, in terms of planning, in terms of acquiring right of way, um, and at this point. Um, it's still still uh on schedule. Um, and they're basically in the uh. In the design uh phase right now, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, any other communications? So we'll close eleven and move on to staff communications. I think you did that already. Any other communications that we'll have?
I didn't know that's good. I did want to give you an update on the general plan, um, and what we've done. Uh, it's been a while. Uh, so our consultant is finishing up um some of the actual elements um as we speak. Uh, the safety element, parks and rec element, um, natural resources and cultural resources elements. Um, so we have an administrative draft coming uh very soon. And so uh as part of that, we will. Um, be bringing those to our technical advisory groups as well as our citizens advisory group. Uh, at which Commissioner Wurden sits on. And um. In terms of outreach, we have had a small business workshop uh last last week. Um, kind of to better understand um small businesses, um. Sort of the barriers to new small businesses, what oper- and kind of growth opportunities are out there. Um, and get their perspective on that. Um, and so um. Uh, that was successful. Um, we didn't have a ton of folks there, but the conversation went really well, and we had a lot of good input. We also will be sending out a follow-up email to everybody, all the businesses uh who are on the list to get additional input as necessary. That will work its way into our economic development element of the general plan update um for when that comes out. Um, we're also working on the environmental justice, um, health equity element. It's a becoming a combo element. Um, and so we've been at a couple of the, um, you may have seen us at the concert series. I've had a booth set up. And got some really good uh participation and input on um questions about what's prioritized uh by the. By the citizens in terms of um health and equity. So things like youth and senior services, um, healthy foods. Uh, parks, uh, things like that. So um. And then we're still slated to have uh tentatively have the planning commission have a hearing in December. Uh, for uh some of those or all of those elements. And uh, so we're we're moving along with that as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And seeing that's the end of twelve, we'll move to thirteen, which is adjournment, and I will adjourn the meeting at six forty-one PM. Thank you, everybody.